How are you? Oh shit, what's going on? Why am I scared? Why am I scared? Oh shit, I forgot to turn off the sound. It's better. That's better. How are you guys? Hi Lucen, hi Arthur, hi Bella and hi Demon. Oh and hi Connie! How are you guys? How are you? Lucen, did you wait in chat for me to start stream? Because I went live and you immediately redeemed first. Why are you already here? Tired. Oh, I feel that. Working late tonight, so you won't be able to work. Good. And thank you for the lurky author. Thank you for the lurky. You waited. Yeah, probably because I'm always live at the same time. Need my nap, but have not taken it. I need a nap too, but it's like 6pm. So obviously I'm not gonna take a nap, or else stream will not be happening. Here an hour late. I'm not an hour late! 6pm is my usual time. We just started earlier than the last few times because of studying. I'm sure. I'm very sure. By the way guys, I forgot yesterday Did I tell you I officially sent out my registration for my bachelor thesis? I need to wait for them to work on it and approve it and stuff like that. But I was on time when sending the registration request. That was really good. I was really happy about that. Today is also... Yeah, today is also study, but I... I don't know. I don't know. I got up really early today and went to eat breakfast, but I just ate cake. We went to a little cafe, a friend of me and I. She was writing an exam today. And we met up and went to this little cafe that's close by. And it was nice. We were talking like 2 hours shit-chatting about university and shit. This is sugar shit. Yes, sugar is always good. I had a lot of that. I had a latte macchiato with 2 sugars. 2 sugars. And... Oh hi baby! How are you? Oh, did you just bonk the microphone? And then I got... What is it called? It's not peach, it's plum. I ate the plum cake. Oh, it was so good! They put some whipped cream on it. Oh my gosh, guys, that was so good! Mm-hmm, first meal today. Well, my first meal was the cake. And after that, I went grocery shopping. Because I had to do that. I do not have a lot of food at home. As you probably recall, I had to order food on Sunday. A lot of kisses for this wee little manju. Potato cheese potato... I'm gonna have potato pockets later. Potato pockets filled with cream cheese. Oh, that is so delicious! Also, I got some sour cream with that. Really good. That is really good. I might mince meat for the first potato. I don't have minced meat today. Okay baby. Pray no working need now. Yeah, I feel that. I feel that! I didn't wanna take a nap, because like I said, if I did, the stream would not be happening. Just gonna take a longer sleep later. Yeah. Go to bed early and then take a long sleep. Did you see in Discord? We got passionately muted audio on Twitch. And when I exported it, it exported the... What is it called? The muted things are not even part of the VOD anymore. So it's already muted. And then YouTube went ahead and put some extra restrictions on it. They were like, "Yeah, you have 5 copyright claims, just so you know." 3 of them are fine. 3 of them are totally fine. But 2? Well, you cannot monetize this video. I can't monetize any video, to be honest, because... Excuse me? I'm not monetized on YouTube yet. Cat wants my food, I don't know what to do. I got manju on me and she's baking biscuits. She's making biscuits on my shoulder. Apparently, that's where the biscuit factory is today. She don't even have my... Aww, cute! Yeah, usual stuff with the VODs. I have a few VODs that get copyright claims from YouTube, but not on Twitch. But it's never really an issue. Because it's not... There is no... Oh my gosh, they claim it, so you cannot monetize it. It was the first time. And also... Also! The VOD is banned in 2 areas. In Belarus and Russia. I think that's so funny, like... You're telling me that because of 2 songs? It's not banned? I mean, I don't care, but... It's so funny to me. I can give her, but she will... Yeah, better not start sharing, or else everything is first. Let me get some of my tea. Perfect. Nooo. Oh, you're such a cute little baby. Oh! So cute! She also has a thing where she stretches out her paw and uses her nose to give it... Well, she wants to make sure you pay attention to her. She's under... I'm still lurking in her stream. I'm still lurking. I wanna do that smash our pass as well. I wanna do that. Not today, but we're gonna do that. I already saved it. It's so fun! But yeah, did you really expect her on her birthday not being unhinged? Obviously, that's true. And oh, by the way, I did not rig my model. I spent almost an hour packing a package for a friend in the USA. To make sure everything is safe. I put all of the presents in a shoebox, and then I put the shoebox in 2 plastic bags to make it waterproof. And then I put the plastic bag, and I'm using... Hi baby! And now I'm using a paper shopping bag as the outer skin of my package. So yeah, very creative. She wants to smash it. Clam for it, share it. Which clam? Which one? Wait, what is the Pokemon called? Aren't there 2 oysters? Or does she wanna smash both of them? Cloyster, let me... Both. Oh, both! Oh, okay. I mean... Let her have it. Better have it. I'm pretty sure if we do this, you probably think I might be a little bit unhinged as well. But the hypocrisy comes from across, so why? Why is the hypocrisy? A lot of kisses for this wee baby manju, yeah! Oh, she's smiling! Have to be careful, she's not allowed to sleep that much during the day, because then she's gonna throw a party throughout the night, and I cannot sleep in the night. Oh, I have to remember, I have to bring back the books to the library soon. I think the day after tomorrow, I have to bring them back. Yeah. Oh, that's... Oh! I just wanted to ask you guys, can you hear her purr? But I think the background music is too loud for you guys to hear her purr. Believe me, you would love that if I was a face cam streamer. If I was a face cam streamer, you would absolutely love what Manju is doing right now. But wait, when I'm rigging my model, I wanna do like an idle animation where I lose tracking, like just sleeping or something. I wanna do that. I have to figure that out, how to do pretty ones, so... And then pass the goat to criticize the chat for looking at Dragon with me, I guess. Do you mean... What is it called? Tritini? Do you mean Tritini or what is it called? I don't know if that's the English name. Even if the bots pick it up, the word sperm... I remember now. We have to put a... Yeah, let's put that content classification on there, just in case. But yeah, but Tritini is not smashable. I want you to side with that. Tritini is not smashable. But Cloyster would be. I would not smash it, but it is smashable. Don't forget to drink something, guys. Tritini is like 2 baby. Too much baby to smash. Yeah, obviously pass. Yeah, okay, also pass on the monkey. I would do pass both of them. No, that would also get a... Which one is which? I would have to check which one is which to decide who I would smash. I don't know what your boy did. But it's not really sexy. A mustache is not really a criteria. It's nothing you would like... Yeah. She'll smash on exam and the monkey. She might have a type. She might have a type. Okay, not that far too come. Lucen, like I said, I'm gonna play that on stream someday. And then you have to witness it another time. It will be fun, it will be very fun. Are you in Tio's stream? I'm not sure. Are you her mod as well? Nope? Oh, I thought you were also in her stream. Then you have to only survive it once. In my stream. Hi Arusha, welcome in! How are you? How are you doing? I guess she has a type. Really? I really thought you were also in her community. I was convinced you were also in her community. All I'm saying is her takes our worst then... I'm still curious what you guys would think about mine, about my choices. I wanna strangle the people that hate Suika for making... Wait, there are people hating her for it? I didn't know they were hating it. What? The only drama I heard about it was that people were buying it and then distributing the file. That's what I heard. Why? She did such a good job! Yeah, probably, that's probably a... That model is amazing. She outdid herself. That's amazing! Did you see how much she earned with it? She sat for life. Well, not for life, but for a while now. But I could not... Yeah, like 130k? Not bad. Everything should be unique made for everyone, that is... But it's... That is so stupid, like... If that model was available, like... Hi Tomoya, welcome in! How are you? Love how cozy you are. Oh, thank you! Thank you! It is stupid. If I had the chance back in the day to get her model, like her model would have existed back then, I would have gotten it. That would have been my model. And I would be really happy about it. Like, it's a good start to get into the VTubing scene. Because not everybody can afford like an expensive, really good-made model. And this model is very good-made. Like new start from just 10 months. Yeah! Hi from Uni. I'm so sorry you have to sit through this, Tomoya, but we're gonna do Uni stuff. Well, I am, at least. I am doing that shit. But yeah, it's... It's just... Pretty well, I'm almost to... Yeah, it probably was too good and too cheap. Or let's just say, too affordable. Which is stupid, like she put that much work in it so she gets to decide what she's gonna... What the price is gonna be. Alright, it's not good enough. Wait, what? People are saying it's not good enough? Like... How can you... What? Stupid. It's stupid. That... That model is amazing. Like, it's amazing. It's so amazing that I even entered some giveaways. Because they hate that you can't change your style or something. That's so stupid. Like, why would you change the style? I mean, if you don't like the style, then don't buy it. It's easy as that. Was asked for seats, like, how is it not... Yeah, how is that not good enough? She could put that model up for 500 per profile, and I would still think that's an absolutely good price. It doesn't meet the requirements, so I've just... Oh my gosh, then don't buy it. If you... Like, we were even making one hair takes... Yeah! Yeah! I tried making models, it's... It's work. It's a fucking lot of work. And she did not only draw it, she also... Did she rig it? I think she rigged it also. People have normalized being mean group... Yeah. The VTubing scene can be very toxic. It can be very toxic. And then that reflects the whole, like, a few people are toxic and that reflects the whole thing. Who'd expect 500 making it cheaper? I don't, I'm not sure. I think, I think it's fitting. These people don't understand. Yeah. Yeah. It's like... It's just amazing, this model. I'll feel her heart, Shasha. Yeah! I hope so too. I hope she's coming back soon. And knows her worth, because that's amazing art and amazing rigging and... Yeah. I mean, that she may adaptable like that, but yeah! What do you mean by innovation? Like, there are a few models like that out there. Well, that's... Yeah. Yeah, Automat mod did actually work for the first time. Yeah, I hope she heals from the hurt and understands that those people are just jealous and stupid. Yeah. By sending the haters, yes, let's silence the haters behind closed doors. She deserves all the love and support she can get for what she did, because it's amazing. We're making problem in the problem. She should listen to the customers, not that one. Yeah, but it's easier said than done. It did block the bot, so we have a... Ooh, wait, that, that's a lot, but I mean, it's important. Yeah. Thank you, Shrimpy. And thank you, Lucen, for banning. Shrimpy, how are you? Welcome in. Did I say hello? Hi, Shrimpy, welcome in, how are you? Trugger said, where you're selling a product, every bit of feedback matters. Yeah. It adds exactly. Like, even if you don't get any feedback, that, that also weighs. That also carries a weight. It's not set on the right string. What do you mean? It was not set on the right string, no? Persistent customer complex, okay, I'm missing... Well, then tell him to not buy them, like, if he... If he comes back... Wait, does he come back? You're okay, good. I'm okay too. Didn't... All the money in more settings, I only added the ban term. Yeah, ban terms are usually, I usually know. Right, just a little advance. Yeah, ban, I love. 500, you... Exactly. Like, if you, if you sell 500 a year and one person complains, you will still remember that one person, but 499 people did not complain. On the other side of the news, you can monetize, made it a lot. Yeah. Still waiting to win one of the giveaways. Still waiting to win one. Maybe if I win, you will see me in a new model soon. There, um... For being confrontational isn't proper business etiquette. Yeah, that's why I should not be a business owner, because if someone comes to me and is like, "Your cake does not taste..." Doesn't taste good, and I will, I will be like, "Oh no, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I want my money back." Yeah, nah, that's not happening. That's not happening. Bad luck for you, but, mm, no. She said herself. Really? She would do a giveaway? Yes. It has its powers. Our behind the scenes, otherwise many would get... Yeah! I told you guys, I was a waitress in a bowling alley. I was talking to customers. Um... Let's just say... I was lucky to have a boss that supported me. Let's, let's just, let's just say that. Because... Otherwise, I would have been fired a few times. Really? Yeah, well, it was... Thank you for the hot pet demon! It was not just a bowling alley, like, we also had tables and a small little restaurant. So, yeah, we brought food and drinks to the alley and also we had the tables we would wait on and... People were rude. Time for a little drink. Okay, goodnight, Arusha! Goodnight, see you tomorrow, probably tomorrow. Actually, I enjoyed that job a lot. After I left, it went downhill. My best, like Bunny Bestie, you remember her? She was also working there. We worked there together. She stayed longer. I, I quit because I went to Japan and she stayed for, I think, one more year. Yeah, Bunny Bestie. Bunny Bestie is my best friend, the one who married last year. Because you could... Believe me. Believe me when I say that, author. There were not a lot of muscles. And if there were muscles, mm... Nah, nah, not that, not that type of people, no, no, no. Yeah, when I was still working there, um, I was, we also had disco nights. Oh, I love those. Every Saturday night and Friday night, we were open till 2am with loud music. I... That's where I learned how to speak loud. And there were people who were like, "Yeah, but we already paid", and I would, I would, I would take out my little device. We had little devices where we put in our orders. I would take it out, show them, show to them, be like, "So what exactly did you pay? Because the little device says you didn't pay shit." I was allowed to be like that, and I liked that. I mean, the slum wars are usually the better pools for some... Yeah! We had, we also had some, what is it called in English? Like competitive bowlers. We, we had those. We had also had competitions. Um, and, and leagues and stuff. Um, but those people were all, "Oh my gosh, we're so much better than you are. You're just a stupid waiter." You know, I hated those people. It was terrible. Were there ever incidents? What? Describe what you say would be incidents. I think I like to give more no praise. Oh, we had, oh... There was, yeah, they are really toxic, but there was, um... Uh, it was a birthday, like, the grandparents, parents, children and stuff and... Ooh, that was a fight. Ooh, that was a fight. They came up to us. And the bowling alley and the food and drinks are paid separate. Because of taxes, I don't know. But they paid the bowling alley and I went over there and was like, "Hey, guys, you still have some shit to pay?" Like, obviously, I was nice. I was like, "Hey, excuse me, we, we still have some open tabs. We, we need to cover that." "Excuse me, we already paid that." "No, we did not", and then I tried to... I, I always start out nice. I always start out nice. But they were not nice, and they were like, "Oh, that's so expensive. We never paid for shoes", because they had rental shoes, "We never paid that much for, 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 um, for an alley, and that the food prices are outrageous." I mean, the prices were a little bit on the higher side, yes. But we have that on our website, so you can check that beforehand. And we were, we were fighting, like, there was this, the counter was between us, but we were like, "No, you have to pay that. We, we won't give you your ID back", because they said, "Oh, we want to pay later, so we have to get uh, something for safety", so we usually take their ID and they get it back when we, when everything is paid. So I was like, "Yeah, nah, you're not getting your fucking ID if you're not paying", because if you're not paying, it's gonna go out of my paycheck, and I'm not doing that bullshit. And they were like, "We wanna talk to your boss. Bring her out." And I was like, "Yeah, sure", went to the office and was like, "Hey, boss, you wanna, you wanna join the fight? You wanna join the fight? I think you might enjoy this one." It was... It was awesome. It was me, my boss, and another service worker against that whole family. And they were like, "Yeah, we never come, we are never coming back", and my boss was like, "Yeah, good. Please stay away", and then they paid. They paid and they gave me too much money. I wanted to give it back to them, like, you know, the change, I want to give them the change. And she was like, "No, keep it. I don't want it anymore", so I made like 15 euros on tip, because she didn't want the change. It's, it was... Oh, it was good, it was good. Golfers assume like we would at least correct you. I don't have experience with golfers, any catfight stories. There were not really fights between the... At least not when I was... One time, they had to call an ambulance because a woman went into labor and she, she almost got her baby um, on the alley. That was not fun. Then, why did they go? Exactly! Why did they go there? Like... All, all, all prices are on the website. All of them. From the shoes, to the drinks, to the food, everything. And they are not generous, they were just stupid. I, I, I especially enjoyed the bachelor parties or bachelorette parties. Those were awesome. That, one time, they had this dude who was gonna marry, he had a bingo card where he, where he had to do stuff, and he was like, "Yeah, excuse me, I would need these things", and she showed me the, uh, the bingo thingy. One was get a strand of hair from a stranger, and I was like, "Yeah, go, give me the scissors. You get, you get, you get, you get a strand of my hair", so I gave him a little bit of my hair. And then, and then he was like, "Yeah, would you be okay with me carrying you?", and I was like, "Huh"? And he was like, "Yeah, bridal style, carrying you, just for five seconds, so he can cross off another one", and hi, Psycho, welcome in! So I was like, "Oh, go for it. Go for it." It was so fun. I think self-destructive, those people... There are a lot of people who are stupid. Now, like those menus and plastic things. We do, we do, we do have those. I don't think, no, they don't have them anymore, but back in the day, they had them. They had them. They were at every table and every alley. Laminated menus. Yeah, they were not, they were not laminated, but it was like, like a little booklet. Chio! Hi, Chio, hi raiders, welcome in, how are you? How we doing? Good! I'm so sorry, we're gonna start studying soon. But we're currently, we're currently talking about, um, um, about my past job as a waitress. How are you? How was stream? I was, I was lurking a bit. I was told you made some, let's call it, interesting choices? So... How are you guys? Welcome in raiders. Welcome in! Dragon raid, yeah! I love a dragon raid. Not that clip again. Yeah, it, it tends to show the same clip over and over again. I have that same problem. Questionable choice, yeah. I was told that. Yeah, happy birth... Now I can say it instead of writing it. Happy birthday to you! Everybody, sing with me. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you! Welcome in, I hope you had a good... Did you finish all of the Pokemon? Did you finish all of them? I wanna know, because that is a lot, like over 1000? But yeah. Welcome in, did you finish all of the Pokemon? And how many did you smash? We got 630. How many, how many got smashed and how many got passed? Which one is Carcosta? Let me Google that really quick. Stupid card. I mean, I can understand it. I do, I... I do understand it. It's not my type, but I do understand it. I do understand it. Can I love you? Yes, go. Everybody, please go and give Chio a follow and maybe even a subbie, because today is her birthday. 69th match, nice. Nice. You should sleep. Then go to sleep, demon. Where, where did we stop? Where did we stop? Uh, I was telling a story. I, I don't remember. Where did, where did we ask? Oh, thank you, Shinichi, for following. You're now a tiger style. Welcome in. Did she say smash Arcanine? Which one is Arcanine? Is it the dog? Arcanine. Did you say smash to Arcanine? Chio, I wanted to watch that. I mean, it's, it's, it should be a pass, but... But why does it look smashable? Small, small leg, yeah. Chio, I do understand you. It would be a pass for me, but I, I think it also looks smashable. As long as it has four legs, I'll lose you. Weevil, which one was Weevil? Let me Google that. Well, I would pass that too. Yeah, that looked like a child. I don't know, it gives child wipe, so obviously a pass. That's, that's absolutely a pass. You want to smash a person? Yeah, I was there when she said that. I was like, "You, you wanna do what?" It's not a short king, it's a short prince, so not smashable. It's a child. It's a child. You're not gonna smash children over here. With the short... Oh, are you short? I mean, compared to me, probably everyone is short. Almost everyone is short, but yeah. Paras or parasite? I think both. Yeah, I loved the bride, the career. That was the, the bachelor party. It was, it was so much fun. Those guys were so drunk afterwards. We had those 3-liter, um, tower thingies where you can pour your own drinks. Slightly taller than Choco, but only slightly. Yeah, Chio, you're, you're tiny. You're tiny. I'm fixed to get, of course, I'm fixed to... What are the stars? What are, why are there stars? You knew what? Ah... Yeah, I would do that, but I would make myself a little shorter. I, I would give away 10cm at least. Chio, do you want 10cm to, like, add it, add it to your height? I would, I would give them away. I would give them away. You make myself a full seven between the turnitin. Oh, yeah, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna give away 10cm of my height, so anyone who wants it can grab it. The first one to grab it gets it. I don't want it. I don't want it. At least 10cm, maybe more. Let me check my door. Yeah, something between 160 and 165 would be nice. So I'm gonna go with 10 or 15. Yeah. Here's, no, you cannot use them anywhere. Author. Chio is tiny. Chio is a very tiny dragon. She's a very tiny dragon. She's pocket size, okay? That's, that's good. She's, but it's, like, she's pocket size, okay? That's, that's good. She's pocket size, so we can just put her in our pockets and good is. Sorry, I would put, I would put the 10 centimeters in my assets. Absolutely would. Mm-hmm. That would be actually very nice. If we go backstage. You're saying more, ooh, a second monitor, nice. I need a third. I need a third one. Two is not enough. Chio, how many screens do you have? I would love to add one. You see Chio has three, so that's the perfect amount, right? Two is just not enough. Chio already knew what I was gonna say, so that's why she responded fast. Also, it's just one number, so. It's easy. Then more desk space for my, yeah, I'm running out of desk, desk space too. If I had a third one, I would not know where to put it. Yeah. I think that would be a big, oh shit, where would I put the third one? Well, problem for future Choco. Oh! Hmm, and I've, I need them next to each other, I need, like, they're all in one line, I need that. Oh, drawing, oh, yeah, but that's, that's nice, a drawing tablet can double as a screen. Which is nice. Okay guys, we, we still have eight minutes, and then I have to go to study. Okay, so eight minutes of fun, and then, then it's gonna get boring. Yeah. I hope you had fun in your stream, Chio. Birthday streams are supposed to be very fun. Just thought she looked, looked up where it seems, and... Oh, and don't forget to drink something. I should have bought some alcohol today, so we could do challenges. Got tea, good! Fun fact, you wrote "tea" correctly if you were speaking German. I also got some tea, manju, I'm so sorry, but I have to change the thing positions, my legs start hurting. I have monitors vertically, just reject. That would be my third screen, that would, ooh, careful! Oh! I would do that for my third screen, that would just be for you guys. For you guys in chat, nothing else. Also, probably, I would start scrolling TikTok on my computer when I have a vertical screen. Six miles, that's an ultimate clipper. Depends on how many, how many people you mod, uh, for. You need, you need at least 100 screens. I love them. Oh, are you okay, baby? Hmm? You're okay? No, one big one, no, I could, I could not work with one big one, that does, that simply does not work. That simply does not work. I, I cannot explain why, but it's, I wanna say, I wanna say. Oh, you're almost as tall as I am! So you're small. Everything that's smaller than me is small, and everything that's taller than me is tall, and everything that's the same size as I am is average. As easy as that. So we're still monitoring, one for game, the other for VR. I called you small yesterday. It's, it's really easy, everything under, what, Lucen is tall, you see? Lucen is tall. Everything under, uh, what, the average is 178. I'm 5'7", I don't know what that means. Please put it in, in, in tiger, uh, metrics. Hi baby. The thing is 160, oh, that's small! You're the same size as Levi from Attack on Titan, I think. 170, yeah, that's a 3-centimeter, um, difference, you need to be a little bit more precise. Wait, sorry, are you biting, are you biting my ankle? Yes, Shinichi, you're also small. Everybody's small over here. Well, the secret is, grow up on a farm and drink fresh milk every, every day, like fresh milk. And just run around, be a child, that's how you, that's how you grow, like, very tall. Yeah, listen, my brain threw out the info, I forgot what I grew. Milk stinky. Are you by any chance lactose intolerant, author? Do you have a skill issue? Do you maybe have skill issues with milk? Being tall. Shrimp is tall! Hang on, used to jump off staircase. Oh, I did that too, it was fun, used to be a fan of cross dressers, so. Does that hap- wait, is that, is that in relation to your height? I'm like, doesn't tolerate, just sense it, I just. Shrimp, aren't you taller than me? Really. To say that is, is confident and does not need to remember. Okay. So, you say milk? Is milk correlated to ghosts and the paranormal? I'm 6'6". You see? Shrimpy is tall. Shrimpy is very tall. Just skeleton. Wait, sometimes? So milk is sometimes related to the paranormal? He's carrying up to each other, I don't know what that means. Huh? Where do, what, wait, where do favorite drinks come from right now? What, did I miss? I go for the one, oh. Oh! Oh! Okay, 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 it makes sense now. Very tall guy, I'm Bruce Lee movie, I did not watch Bruce Lee movies. So, that's, yeah. Okay, okay, I get it now, I get it now, but is that the reason why I've never broke anything? Is that the reason why I never broke anything? I think I broke my foot once, but I'm sure. So you guys, the secret to never breaking bones is always drink your milk. Yeah, just as easy as that. And then make, so Lucen is also invincible. Too much catching bombs, thanks, before I could break. My bones, my bones are strong. My bones are strong. I am indestructible. Drink this beer. Wouldn't that be cannibalism? Demon? Had more fractures than most food group. Yeah, maybe you should drink more milk then. It's so much, mother. 14. Yeah, guys, uh, it's now mandatory, if you wanna, if you, if you wanna watch my streams, you have to drink milk. Indestructible, right? Yes, I am indestructible, we already talked about that, um, some, someday, like, what, what happened to me, like you cannot, you cannot kill me, that's just, that's just not an option. Drinking becomes less effective once you reach a certain age. Not if you drink enough. Okay, author, you just have to drink more. Guys, don't drink, don't forget to drink something. Perhaps just drink caffeine, take caffeine, mm. I do crunch on bone. You know, when you have chicken wings, I eat the cartilage, or what it's called, I eat that too. The only thing that's left over is the bone, and that's it, I eat everything else. Much useless, it's just. Not if you drink enough. That's that. It's healthy to, to eat the cartilage, because that, that makes your skin nice. No, I don't eat the bones. I'm too scared to slice open my, my insides with the bones. What if they break, and then, and then they get sharp, and then they, 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 um, cut open my insides? No, we don't eat bones over here, but everything else is eaten. Yeah. I'll finish my meal and my cat. Well, I think you're not gonna finish that. At least I know I wouldn't finish that meal. Because I would prob- I would probably throw up right next to the cat. As long as I say, trans is small enough to suck, probably. I'm not eating bones. Put your food free protein. I need the free collagen from the, from the, um, the cartilage. Good for the, for the skin. Study, oh, oh shit, we have to study! We have to study, uh, I don't wanna... I don't want to. Someone please save me from this stupid jar. Someone, someone, please save me. Hey, please, please say, oh wait, I have to, I have to put you guys on the small screen now. You guys are gonna go on the small screen? No, you can't, no, you, no, no, you will not read, oh shit, let me turn that off. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take that away from you guys for a moment, oh, it, it is, oh, it already is taken away. I already took it from you. Okay, so, goal for today is to write at least one page, maybe, let's add a second page. Just in case, maybe we are productive. Also, I have to, I have to get my job applications done, because I wanna start working in March. I wanna start working in March. Everything else is probably gonna kill me. I don't wanna study either Shinichi, I know it's stupid, but I don't, I have to, it's, it's it's terrible. Or Tiger will be gone. I, I don't think it would help, but go for it. Yeah. What, what demon? Demon! Demon! Music, oh shit, the musing. Here you go! Here you go, here's your music. And, and is the cat purring loud enough? Do you want, can we even turn up the cat purring? No, after that, what, don't die. Do you guys want more cat? I could turn it up a little bit more, if you, if you want. I'm gonna put it up to that, because you cannot go wrong with cat purring. It's just not possible, cap you're gonna tremble. But yeah, I'm gonna, okay, so, for everybody who's new here, we're gonna have 25-minute study session where I do not chat, because I'm trying, I'm trying to focus. Um, but then we have, after every, hi Taro, welcome in, how are you? After every 25 minutes, we have a 5-minute break where we chat and have fun, and then we go right back into studying. Yeah, Taro, get ready for the line. Also, we, also, Taro, the study command, remember, we got that now. Um, but yeah, I will be gone for 25 minutes. I mean, I mean, I'm right here, but I will, I will mute myself, so. I don't want to turn to my units. Yeah. It's, it's, it's bad. Universe takes too much time from me, but I'm almost done, almost. If I'm lucky, I will be, it will be done by end of March. So I will see you in 25 minutes. So I will see you in 25 minutes.
Break time? Did we already reach break time? Oh my gosh, guys! Let me, let me finish... Uh... Okay. Okay, 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 okay. Um... Okay. Finally. So, what did I miss? Yeah, I saw a lot of chatting happening. What did I miss? Toboy, it almost... Good. Good that you're almost done, Toboy. And I saw, I saw a lot about puke. Like, a lot. And then there was... Yeah, there it is. The, the topic changed. Favorite tea. I like stinging nettles. Stinging nettle is the best tea ever. Yeah. Oh, we have vitamin water as well over here. Yeah. I like it, but it's expensive. So, I never really get... I treat myself from time to time and get it. Yeah. Guys, don't forget to drink something, by the way. Ooh, I like pina colada. They're good. They're good. But I do not like mojito. Never had a margarita? Only the margarita pizza? That's good. Palomas, I never heard of that. I never had root beer before. You're gonna go after this break time? No, demon! No, you have to stay! I'm missing a few for the... Okay, vodka is... It's a bad choice. It's a bad choice, guys. No matter what you do, it's a bad choice. Coffee, root beer. Yeah, go get yourself some coffee. Coffee is important. I'll get some more tea. Can't enjoy one vodka. I do not enjoy any vodka. I do... Oh my gosh, guys. I do like Bacardi Raz with Sprite. Oh my gosh, it tastes so good! So good. You must say, otherwise you will get executed. We do not execute over here, but, uh, we bonk. We bonk people. It's like, they're awful alcohol. I think it was well to still... It's fine, it was... I recently learned a fun fact. The, um, the Russian mafia, I think, was it? In America? They import, uh, vodka, but they color it blue. And, um, imported in, in window cleaning bottles, because that is less taxes or, or whatever it's called. You have to pay less, uh, at the border for cleaning supplies than for alcohol. And then when it's in the country, they, uh, refill it in bottles. So... Things, uh, things you learn on the internet. It's, it's really fun sometimes to learn new things. But it's really smart. It is so smart! I would... Wait, my tiger's gone? Did I do that? Did I do that, or did you guys do that? Oh, I did that. I, I made the tiger disappear. I need to change the hotkeys for my, for my, um, toggles. I really have to change that. Also, I checked my email, but nothing new. But my, my university? One, one new thing. My university organized, um, a demo. Demonstration, I don't know. A riot? No, it's not a riot. But... Against the Nazis. Which is pretty cool. Which is very cool, in my opinion. So, yeah. It could also be normal, but the fun fact I read was about Moscow. So, it also could be normal people. It could absolutely be normal people. It is, it's really smart. Like, you have to think outside the box. But I'm gonna go back to studying. Listen to the thing. What thing? But yeah, I will be back in 25 minutes or 24 minutes, because one minute is already over. Um, and yeah, I will be back.
Break time! I have not written a single word because I am looking for a source. Because the source I had was a bad one. Oh, by the way, everybody who's new here, you will get used to me complaining a lot. I'm always complaining. Yeah. But yeah, Manju came back on my lap. She's sleeping right now. So... Get some more tea! And I saw Demon was having a conversation with himself. Now that you said it's Korra, I get it. I get the reference. It's Evie! It's Evie and all the Evie illusions. I love them! They're so adorable! Yeah, go for shiny hunting! Why did you hate Evie? What? I've got like 3 Evies. Then get a Flareon. Flareon is my... I would say Flareon is my favorite evolution. Yeah, because Evie is a cute little baby! Thank you for giving one to me. You don't have to do that. You don't have to do that. Go catch whatever Pokemon you want! Shiny hunt whatever Pokemon you want! Ayaha, welcome in! How are you? We're doing good, I think. I hope. I used to play Pixelmire. I could not pick a good stirring program so hard. Evie is perfect! You killed the shiny gift. What do you mean the gift? What's a shiny gift, huh? We're doing good, thank you. Ooh, pizza is nice over trendy fusion. No, we had a raid. We had a raid earlier. We had a raid earlier from Teo. Oh, Lucario is also good. The other ones, Galivor and Snami... I do not like them that much. I do not like them that much. They're alright. Evie is awesome. If I were living in the Pokemon world, I would have an Evie. I would have Evie and I think Ineko? I'm not sure if that's the English name, but it's the German one. And... Maybe Mimikyu? If that's also... I don't know if that's the English name or the German one. Pretty enough, I got a shiny Riolu. Ooh, that's cute! I love Riolu. That Ri- Riolu... It's adorable! You know what? I'm gonna put that up here. I need to check because I know somewhere on my computer I got my application still, which I could reuse for like the new applications. I don't like Pikachu. I do not like Pikachu, so that won't be a problem. Mimikyu is awesome. It is so cute. It's sad, but it's so cute. So, yeah, I have to go for 25 minutes again. But yeah, I will see you guys soon.
Break time. I have not written a single word because I am looking for a source. Cause the source I had was a bad one. Oh, by the way, everybody who's new here, you will get used to me complaining a lot. I'm always complaining. Yeah. But yeah, Manju came back on my lap. She's sleeping right now. So... Get some more tea. And I saw Demon was having a conversation with himself. And now that you said it's Korra, I get it. I get the reference. Wait, for one more. It's Evie. It's Evie and all the Evie illusions. I love them. They're so adorable. Yeah, go for shiny hunting. You stay... Why did you hate Evie? What? I've got like three Evies. Then get a Flareon. Flareon is my... I think, I would say Flareon is my favorite evolution. Yeah, because Evie is a cute little baby. Thank you. Give him one too. You don't have to do that. You don't have to do that. Go catch whatever Pokémon you want. Shiny hunt whatever Pokémon you want. Ayaha, welcome in. How are you? We're doing good, I think. I hope. I used to play Pixelmire. I could not pick a good stirring program so hard, huh? Evie is perfect. You killed the shiny. What do you mean the gift? What's a shiny gift, huh? We're doing good, thank you. Ooh, pizza is nice. Oh, trendy fusion. No, we had a raid. We had a raid earlier. We had a raid earlier from Teo. Oh, Lucario is also good. The other ones, Gargivore and Snimey. I do not like them that much. I do not like them that much. They're alright. Evie is awesome. If I were living in the Pokémon world, I would have an Evie. I would have Evie and I think Ineko. I'm not sure if that's the English name, but it's the German one. And... Maybe a Mimikyu, if that's also... I don't know if that's the English name or the German. Pretty enough, I got a shiny Riolu. Ooh, that's cute. I love Riolu. That Ri- Riolu. It's adorable. You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that up here. I need to check because I know somewhere on my computer, I got my application still, which I could reuse for like the new applications. I don't like Pikachu. I do not like Pikachu, so that won't be a problem. Mimikyu is awesome. It is, it's so cute. It's sad, but it's so cute. So yeah, I have to go for 25 minutes again. Uh, but yeah, I will see you guys, uh, soon.
Right time, I didn't notice because, oh shit, I made the game small so I didn't see the timer run out. I'm currently at this, I'm doing applications. I don't wanna write right now. Cute sad and happy what? And goodnight Trumpy, goodnight! Ooh, we got a clean demon right now? Wow! Wow! I'm currently trying to figure out if this one job would be alright because... Um, I go by bus. I'm going by bus, so I have no fucking idea. I'm currently trying to figure out if there is a bus stop close by. Cause that would be pretty awesome. But it does not seem like it. I mean, there is another one that would be kinda alrighty, but still... Do I send the application? Yeah, why not? Why not? That would be actually pretty awesome. Because I would be working with animals, I would be working in a pet store! It would be so cool! Act like this is an uncommon thing, I guess, nice. Listen, I'm a VTuber, I shower once a year. Maybe twice. Yeah, I'm showering twice, once for Christmas and once for my birthday. Yeah. Oh shit, I'm not qualified for it! That would be more than cool. Only once every 10 years, not only once a year, not every 10 years is too long. Maybe it's twice too. The comet never showers, apparently. I would like to work part-time only. That would be so cool! Where is it now? I wanna start a new job immediately. Gotta keep the gamer in. This is always hiring, I think. I don't wanna work at McDonald's, that would ruin it for me! That would ruin it for me! I like McDonald's, but if I work there, I cannot, I'm gonna eat McDonald's every day and then, one day, I cannot eat McDonald's anymore. That would be so sad. I think I focus on job applications first because that is a little bit more important right now. Um, like I said, I wanna start after, I have to start as soon as possible. Yeah, that's bad, like, if you eat something so much, you, one day, you just cannot eat it anymore. And that would be bad because I like my Happy Meals. And we will be healthier. I will definitely be healthier. Yeah, absolutely, that's very true. Oh, that's also true! I could eat everything on the menu! That would be so cool. Uh, but yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to checking for new jobs.
Break time guys! I found 2 more jobs that sounded... I have not, I have not applied to any. But I found 2 more that sound interesting. So I think... I'm gonna apply to some... Hi baby, hi! Um, yeah, what did I miss? Thank you for the luck, Dauru! Don't forget to drink something! The food is no good first. Yeah, the, yeah, I would, I would smell like fries. I do love pickles! Oh, I love, especially the ones on the cheeseburger! Mm-hmm! That's a good one! It's a very good one! Buy like 2 cheeseburgers with me. 2 cheeseburg- Cheeseburgers are good! They, they are good, they are underrated in my opinion! They are so underrated! But I will, I will put my food in the oven, uh, in the next study time. I don't know how long it's supposed to be in the oven, but you know, ju- just to get ready. Cause it's 9pm and I am getting hungry over here. 1:30, yeah, it's fucking expensive! I remember... When I was young, I remember there was a time where the cheeseburger only costed 1 euro. Just 1 euro. Mm-hmm! I feel old every time the price goes up! I hate it! Yeah, I remember 1 euro, it was like, we went shopping, my friends and I, and I was like, "Yeah, here, please Burger King, take my 5 euros and give me 5 cheeseburgers." And then I just snacked them. That was good, they were good old time! They were good old times, but then they made it more expensive. And we sad! Very sad! I wish I would bring back those prices! Also, the Big Mac! Suddenly like, a bajillion dollars! Why is that? Give me back my 4... No, wait, 3 euro something Big Mac! Give it back to me! Like even the 4 euro one, I would accept. But now, I think it's like, like 7 or 8? Which is fucking expensive! Nah, nah, eh eh. I do hate it! Yeah, just the bigger or the combo? Just the Big Mac! Just the Big Mac was like 3 euros and something, I, I, I remember? And the combo was like something around 6 euros? But now you pay for the combo like 10? Which is insane! Maybe even more? I wish I get my old prices back. Food is getting way too expensive! By the way, what are you guys doing? What are you guys doing right now? I'm curious! Give me all the information! Also, when I'm back in the study session, please tell me what is your favorite color and why it is your favorite color? I'm trying to see something. So yeah. I will be back in 25 minutes. Maybe with my food! Maybe with my food.
Hey guys, I just came back from the kitchen. My dinner is ready. I'm gonna give Manjo her treat. And then... If I don't fall over her, that's... That's nothing. Yeah, time to eat dinner. Time to eat dinner. Okay, so... Can I put YouTube on for you guys? Hydrate up bitch! Why is it so small? Let's see. Oh, it's cold! Ohhh! I have to watch the light later. Also have to check the light. Uh... Let's do this. Oh, I get a hydrate and thank you for the hot water! They put the audio... Oh, I hate that! Why do they do that? They put the... They make a voiceover AI, I think? I hate that so much! Why would you do that? Let's see. Is it sound alright? Is it too loud? Is it too quiet? Oh, by the way, I wanna see what did I miss? Playing all purple and green. But mostly purple. It's blue. Oh wait. I can now leave the present for another. We don't have a large... Oh, we have the... We have the McMenu Small and the Normal McMenu. Those both very expensive. Well, the McMenu Small is not enough. It's just saying that. Red, red. White and black, but it's used... All color for the HP. Oh yeah, what you... Brown? Why do you don't like... Brown is such a nice color. Oh, pink! My least favorite is blue. Where Tiger Freeze? Tiger Freeze itself. That is the only way. And I'm gonna hydrate. It's a bit loud, okay. Better now? The air is new, someone maybe ChatGPT. ChatGPT saves my ass. It saves my ass. It's like it wrote half of my bachelor thesis. Even though I don't let it write it, I just use it for research. Yeah, the Chinese? The Chinese had a robot performance at Chinese New Year. It was amazing! No, don't run guys! Don't run! Second one from calling mom. I don't know. Here is your video. Sound alright? Manjo! Brown is fine, it's natural color, but as soon as it's seen the menu. Really? Wow. Yeah, it is. I'm on author's side. Do you think so? I think she has normal arms. I think her arms are just normal. Wait, only pink. Pastel pink is so pretty. Guys, don't forget to drink something.
I feel so loved. Alright, there's still a little bit of pulled pork kind of mixed in here with all this brisket. So we'll kind of just eat it along with the brisket. It's still tender. Good meat candy, the way it's supposed to be.
Seeing the sandwich open face like this, even after eating most of the pulled pork, it's just so, so insanely huge. It's behemoth as the name implies. There was just so much meat packed into this giant bread loaf.
Super generous helping a brisket on this sandwich. It doesn't really matter what composes of the six pounds, as long as it hits six pounds, it seems like. And I got a really generous portion of brisket, and I'm happy.
Y'all know that brisket is my favorite during barbecue challenges, so I wasn't at all upset with these ratios. I felt like quite the lucky competitor.
Who do we have here? We have aunts, uncles, parents, cousins, second cousins. Yeah, that pretty much covers it. There's gotta be at least forty in just the family, right? There's a lot. Oh yeah, third cousins.
And with the intimidating nature of this challenge, I was really, really nervous for this challenge, y'all. I was super thankful to have, of course, all of my family and Randy's family there to cheer me on. I needed all of the motivation, all of the hype, all of that support to get through this thing. Ah, man, I was really struggling already.
Might be the first time in my life I'm gonna say yay, I'm done with brisket. Oh, there's a lot here.
Yeah, excitement for brisket ending isn't something that I would typically express, but I was overjoyed to finally be able to see these burger patties.
I know it's hard to see. I got that one. This is a bun and burger and fries.
Pass the things to her. Really? Wow!
Why no bite of brisket, then it's a cheeseburger and fries challenge?
And with that, that very, very joyous moment where all I had left was a cheeseburger and fry challenge, I'm gonna leave you guys to enjoy the rest of this very, very special video to me. I'll catch you all in the next one.
Add a little more sweet and smoky, because I liked it. Not today. Alright, now it looks like another challenge. Ah, simple! So easy! Polish off some of these fries. They're very good, by the way. I think I've said that already, but yeah.
See you soon, Lucian. See you soon! I guess true. Every color can look good depending on what it's used for.
Last fry, then I just gotta get down this massive double cheeseburger.
How do you travel through colors? What do you mean? I don't understand. What do you mean? Isn't leather like... Naturally brown? And you can turn into a pink wall, sorry. Oh! Oh that's... Oh my gosh, that's actually awesome. That's actually awesome. I would love that. I would only wear silver clothing, because then you can pop up literally anywhere on the world. There's metal everywhere. Imagine walking through water... Um... Demon! I'm really sorry to tell you, but walking through water is like, normal. Or do you mean like the same with the colors? You jump in your bathtub and you get out in a different country? Ah, I wanna... There was a new Beard Meets Food video. We have to watch it. We have to watch it! Bring everything to blow the water... Ah! My old fuck. The Titanic and the Titan. Our sacrifice to the water gods. The rich. At a specific depth, you don't float up anymore. If you reach a specific amount of water above you, you go down. Well, it's the pressure. It's the pressure and that's correlating to the depth of the water.
Swiss, alright, let's go with Swiss. I love places like this. You got a bunch of knickknacks up on the wall. I don't know if John Deere sponsors this room, but there's lots of John Deere related things on the walls. This is the Wall of Fame and Shame. I think the winner section is this little purple strip in the middle. As far as I could tell. I think the winner section is this little purple strip in the middle, as far as I could tell. And we got the losers over there, and some losers over there.
But using my wireless compressor, my fire junk. The deeper you go, the more pressure is.
Thank you very much. This is a big omelet.
It is a very big omelet.
Alright, so my place called Old Times Cafe, but they spell it with a K, cause they're hip like that, and I'm taking on their giant twenty-four egg omelet challenge. Twenty-four eggs, a meat of your choice, cheese of your choice, vegetables of your choice, three orders of potatoes, I went with hash browns, and three orders of toast.
I do not like omelette. Omelette is disgusting.
The meal is free. Yeah? Alright.
I'm immediately getting sick if I eat omelette.
You want me, Swiss cheese?
Too much egg, I can't handle it. I can handle more than two, but not in that type of form, like scrambled eggs and omelette, uh-uh. Absolutely no way. He did, he, he failed some. He failed some. He, he shows that and he failed some. It's rare, but it happens. Yeah, oh my, that's a big upright roll number. Oh shit. Did you, guys, did you hear me burp? I hope not. I tried to be quiet.
I think I get why the lettuce is there now. It's actually really practical. I'm sorry for water, thank you. Could I, um, nap, napkins, yeah, napkins would help. Um, do you have any root beer?
We do not. We need chocolate pepper, Coke, diet Coke.
Can I have the diet Coke, please? Thank you. I know this lungs are a bit disgusting, but um, quite practical. Oh, thank you very much. How am I doing?
No, no, it's a government. That does, sadly does not have anything to do with if it's good or not. It depends on what it's made out of, and then there is, um... A lot of carbs. Ah, okay.
I don't think the chef wants to be beaten. Keeps looking at me with beady eyes.
Look at all that bread he has to eat.
Everything. Gotta eat everything.
I can't eat, I can, but not if I had that much egg before. Make sandwich with the bread. Oh, that would have been genius, yes! That would have been such a good idea. Smaller sandwiches. But he has something right next to the, you see the little containers? I think he has some butter or something, I don't know. I'm gonna do. I would say that was good after burping, but it was not. I'm kinda disappointed in the potato pockets. I'm kinda, there was, there was dill in it. They were filled with cream cheese and some herbs, but one of the herbs was dill, and you could taste that. Fried rice for breakfast. It was spicy for some reason, my toast didn't have it spicy. Ooh, that sounds good! I would be up to trying that. Or I must hate the things I love. I'm sorry, demon. I'm very sorry, demon. Why do you like the things I hate? And why? No, you, you un- understand how I've...
Um, but my real first name is Adam, so okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but the real question is why do you guys enjoy things I hate? I'm not weird. Oh, hi Comet. Did I say hello before? Hi Comet, welcome in. I'm pretty sure I said hello before, but I'm... I don't know. But now, now I created you.
You know what, I wish I'd ordered someone else. Should've got some for the road anyway. Thanks for having me, I really appreciate it.
Your time favorite soup. What soup? What soup? Cold soup. Any soup that's cold is not good. Yeah, that's not, I don't care what specific soup it is, if it's cold, it's not good. No title unlocked, Choco Man, I hate all good things. Well... That's, that's not my problem. I'm gonna give you back your game. Ah, my nose is running, I hate it. Oh, I have to go back to prison. Yeah, soup, I'm talking about, it's the opposite. No, it's not cold. It's just, it's, it's hot, but it's called cold soup. I'm judging you from my glass. I'm judging you from the, from the study prison. Watermelon, ooh, watermelon soup sounds good. Watermelon su- soup sounds good. I like watermelon salad, you know, where you put watermelon and feta cheese in, in a bowl, and then some, some mint, but I do not like the mint, uh, in that salad, so yeah. But that's pretty good. Ew, beets, mm. Oh, marinade beets, oh never mind, I, I eat these. I, 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 I like the, 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 you can buy in the store in the glass, the beets, in, in the brine, like pickled beets. Oh my gosh, that's so delicious, I love those, but that's the only way I eat beets. Oh, look, another, another very specific food I only eat under specific circum- circumstances, like, it's, it's like the opposite of the potato. I don't eat potato if it's potato shaped, but everything else is fine. I don't eat beet unless it's pickled, like the opposite. I only eat one way of the beet, but all the ways of the potato instead, uh, except for the, the basic. It's not borscht. Borscht is disgusting, but yeah, that's not, borscht is hot, isn't it? But yeah, I'm gonna go back to applying for jobs, so I will see you soon. Break time. We're gonna do one more study session. And that's it. What did I miss? Welcome back, Taoru, how are you? Have I have I welcomed you back already, or was that? Manjo. Taoru, please don't do a line when chat already progressed after the first line. This way, I will get confused and might miss some messages. Wait, 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 ew, footlock. My beard and she said, yeah, you're the. Yeah. You don't look eighteen, eighteen, you look older. And bye bye, author, see you next time, guys, don't forget to drink something. You're leaving after this break? No, you have to stay another study session. I I I tell you, you have to. It's a command. It's a command, are you okay, Manjo? Yeah. It's a command. How mu- I don't know, you look like mid twenties. Yeah, I don't look my age either. That's alright. That's alright. I don't know. I don't know, do I look cute, maybe? Maybe. Manjo. I would say, I'm not gonna talk to my age. And then I'm going, well, no. Huh? You cannot leave demon, you cannot leave. Yeah. You cannot leave. Well, that's, that's a problem for future demon, that's a problem for future demon.
Break time guys! Break time! We're gonna do one more study session. And that's it. What did I miss? Welcome back Tauro, how are you? Have I welcomed you back already or was that...? Manjo! Tauro, please don't do a line when chat already progressed after the first line. This way I will get confused and might miss some messages. Wait for me... Ew, footlock! My beard and she said yeah you're the... Yeah! You don't look 18, 18, you look older! And bye bye author, see you next time guys, don't forget to drink something! You're leaving after this break? No, you have to stay another study session! I, I, I tell you, you have to! It's a command! It's a command, are you okay Manjo? Yeah! It's a command. How mu... I dunno, you look like mid twenties? Yeah, I don't look my age either. That's alright! That's alright! I dunno! I dunno, do I look cute? Maybe? Maybe? Manjo! Yeah! I would say... Not gonna talk to my age. And then I'm going right on... Huh? You cannot leave demon, you cannot leave! Yeah. You cannot leave! Interesting, well that's, that's a problem for future demon, that's a problem for future demon. Yeah. As easy as that! Can I put five amp? Well, that seems like a you problem! It's 11 there! As much as I say, go get some sleep! Where is that? Are you serious? I'm looking for a job close to me! Not like 100 kilometers away! It's like... So far away! Oh honey baby! I watch for my... No, I do not watch sports, sports are boring! Sports are boring! But yeah, I'm gonna go back to applying to jobs and then I will see you and we're gonna raid after this study session. But yeah, I'm gonna go back to applying to jobs and then I will see you and we're gonna raid after this study session.
It's time. We didn't finish the level today. We didn't finish, oh no! But we can, we can... We can do that. We can put a checkmark on here. Oh, I'm done. I'm so done. I already checked who we can raid. Um, I chose someone cozy because we are all cozy right now. So we probably wanna be cozy... Um, going on. Uh, keep on being cozy, that's what I wanted to say. And bye demon, good night. Uh... Yeah. But it was not that long stream. It wasn't already streaming, it was only fi... Oh, it... Oh shit, it was a 5 hour stream! It was a 5 hour stream! Whaaat? Whaaat? Oh shit! Um, but yeah, um, I wish you all a good night, a good day or whatever. We're gonna raid over to TreTre again. She's doing some art. And you know the rules: be nice, leave a follow, say hello, um, all of, all of that. Um, and I will see you guys... Probably tomorrow. Probably tomorrow, so... Yeah. Um... I'm gon... Uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm just... Sorry, my brain is not braining anymore. I'm just gonna raid you over, so... Bye bye!